I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled March eighteenth twenty twenty-four city council meeting as you come in tonight, which would be to my right, to everyone else in the audience's left. There's a set of double doors. You'll come through those doors. Next to the doors, there's a desk. On that desk is a sign-in sheet. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. Uh, Deputy Clerk Lauren, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Morrissey. Palladino. Pratt. Sharp. Soha. Stuccio. Veer. And Wolfram. Wolfram and Mayor Stockford.
Yes.
All present.
Thank you, Michelle. We will move into approval of agenda. Does any member of council or city manager have any changes they'd like to see made to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Veer. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll open up the podium to public comment on agenda items only during this time. The podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And remember, if you're gonna comment during this particular public comment period, make sure that it's got a direct tie to something present on the agenda. The podium is now open.
Okay, uh, mayor and council. Mayor Stockford, I see we have the college hotel project on the agenda. What are we going to do with the Kiefer now that its business case will be rendered absolute obsolete by the college Galloway Hotel Project? Could you talk about Plan B now that the Kiefer project is dead? The city needs to declare C N L in default. Mr. Morrissey, Mr. Palladino, Mr. Wolfram work for the college. They cannot and should not vote on the college hotel project. A G opinion six zero zero five and state law. I believe state law. Mr. Stuccio's wife, I believe, works at the college and his household income is dependent on the college. It's a clear conflict conflict of interest for him to vote to. Second part I see under new business is, uh, a Nez application who Mr. Wolfram himself, a college employee, helped draft that program. Why are these million dollar Nez properties true cash values less than most of the average residence home in the city of Hillsdale? I'll answer it. It's called the good old boy system and cronyism. William Brodbeck's property specifically was a Hillsdale College past chair who was a who was a Hillsdale College past chair board member shows a true cash value of a hundred and two dollars or a hundred and two thousand dollars, hundred and two, one seventy-four on the land, yet no true cash value on the home and where is lot twenty? It's not being shown. Nothing structured at all. Everything is over, all over the place. The value of the home should be listed with the current value of for taxation purposes and show the Nez contract. By not showing cash value, it could later manipulate the value, which can go up five percent, five percent annually as a taxable amount. Values could be different at the con- at the end of the contract's expiration date. How how housing prices are at their all time high. It could look like it could look like they are playing favorites based on who you are. I believe his name's John March, um, but Mr. March is spelled incorrectly on the Nez. Um, on the G I S or G I F, whatever it is on the county's website, many seem to be misspelled, in my opinion, on purpose. On the Nez properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any more public comment?
Thank you, council. My name is Sam Lehrer. I'm in Ward Three. I'm here to express my objection to what I see as a troubling trend in this council's abuse of tax abatements. As evidenced by the egregious example of the proposed tax abatement for Mr. Rorick. This was a development that offered an immediately clear identifiable benefit to the community, such as something that would create jobs or greatly increase the stock of single family homes. I have no issue with the proposed abatement. What we are discussing, however, is giving special treatment to a single individual to build a single residence. It is well known that we lack the tax base to support the improvements to our infrastructure this community desperately needs. And yet we're going to willingly forego nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional revenue for what? The estimated price of the construction is eight hundred thousand dollars over the average property cost in this area. If Mr. Rorick has the means for such a luxury, he has the means to pay the same mortgage rate as everyone else. On the contrary, if property taxes are not are too high for Mr. Rorick, then they are too high for everyone else as well. This council is tasked with promoting the interests of the whole community, not dishing out favors to a privileged few. The proposed tax exemption whiffs of corruption, and I strongly encourage this body to vote down. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any more public comment?
Consternation. I won't comment ever again.
Um, regarding the Hillsdale College Hotel Project, we're not voting on anything regarding that, right? And we wouldn't, would we? Okay, it's just pro- it's development. Well.
If I buy anything.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's move along. Okay, no more public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the podium and move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and B P U claims of February twenty-ninth, payroll of March fourteenth, city council minutes of March fourth, finance minutes of March fourth, community development committee minutes of March seventh, E D C minutes of March seventh, public safety committee minutes of March twelfth, Hillsdale College Taste of Manning event agreement, B P U eight inch water main bore and B P U waste, uh, treatment plant generator A T S installation. Any discussion on any of these items? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha. Can I have a vote, Michelle? Roll call, excuse me.
Councilman Morrissey. Palladino. Councilwoman Pratt. Councilman Sharp. Soha. Stuccio. Veer. Wolfram. And Mayor Stockford.
Yes.
Eight zero passes.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll move into communications petitions, item letter A, Hillsdale College Hotel Project. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is on the agendas specifically just to let council and the public know what was presented, um, to the Community Development Committee of Council. So that's town, Councilman Veer, Councilman Wolfram and Councilwoman Pratt. Um, received a presentation, the presentation that's in the packet, um, of the college, college's intent to develop a hotel project, hotel slash restaurant. Um, so there is nothing, no action, um, for this in the agenda. It was specifically just for information, uh, about a future project, um, that we'll be working on with the college.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Comments? Councilman Wolfram?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, uh, the Kiefer House is gonna be, uh, helpful for this and this, uh, project is also gonna be helpful for the Kiefer House. There's been exchange between, uh, between the people at Seal Real Estate and the college itself. So it's not gonna be detrimental to what the what the Kiefer House is doing.
Okay, well, I, uh, you know, I I haven't been a big booster of the Kiefer House, um, and I I haven't, uh, been supportive of it. I know that, but since they're working on it, if they are to complete it, I think it's gonna be beneficial for our downtown, but I really hope we can get past this convolution of the Kiefer Project having like a direct attachment with Hillsdale College because it's not. The Kiefer House will be available for anybody to use, anybody to rent, to come. And I, you know, I've, I had these conversations with people when the Kiefer, when they first started doing the construction on the Kiefer and saying it's just for the college, it's just for the college. And I kept thinking to myself, Hillsdale College is a billion dollar institution. If they want or need a hotel, they're just gonna build a hotel. So, uh, and that appears to be what's going on right now. So, um, yeah, I hope we can not. As the Kiefer House moves forward, I would like to see it be successful. Uh, we're knee deep into it, so I just, I hope we don't get, uh, overwhelmed with this convolution that the Kiefer is directly connected to Hillsdale College because it's not. It's our down, it's a downtown hotel that should be for anybody to use. It's not just for college events, correct? Councilman Sharp?
Let's just spell rumors. The Kiefer House is online. It's going to happen. If it doesn't, you can have my resignation right now because it's gonna happen. I've been there. I've checked it out. They're not backing down. They're doing their job. This has nothing to do with the college, but it will benefit the community because there is a lack of hotel space. And that's what they, their fight, their battle cry was, we have to send people to Coldwater, Jackson to support, to put them out because we don't have the hotel space. So it's beneficial, but we will cross our Ts and dot our Is with this project. If there's gonna be a hotel, we're not gonna get taken down the river. This council's not that stupid and we will fight our fight when it's time to come. But the Kiefer House is going, period.
I didn't mean to imply that the Kiefer House had anything to do with the college. I'm just saying that the, the, uh, it will, it will not be harmed by the, the new facility that the college is building. And it was never intended just for the, actually it was intended for weddings and things like that with the Don Theater, so.
It's thirty rooms, right?
Thirty, thirty-four rooms.
Thirty-four rooms. It's not, not gonna be something that can see two thousand people coming into town, so.
I, I actually have a question for the, uh, people who are connected to the college. I'm just curious from a business standpoint, are there gonna be, are they planning more activities? Because basically they have roughly six major weekends between homecoming, parents' weekend. You know, they have a few C C As, but are they looking down the road to be bringing more people into town to support the hotels?
Oh, I didn't read it. Councilman Soha.
Tom, would you, could you speak to the conflict of interest that was brought up?
No, because there's nothing in front of you for which I could tell you whether or not you might have any one of you a conflict of interest. So when it, when it gets to the point, if there is ever something that has to do with that project before council, um, anyone that would have a question about that could raise it and we would be happy to tell you what we thought.
Councilman Veer.
Going forward to, uh, on this proposal, some Hillsdale College. Um, the, uh, the hotel that they're proposing would be open to the public. The restaurant they're proposing would be open to the public. If, uh, the college does a lot of events that are for my, you know, the C C As and everything that are open to the public. Uh, and I think that the college is a very, uh, important and integral part of this community. Uh, and it definitely addresses the lack of hotel rooms currently in the, uh, air, you know, in the city and surrounding areas. So I, I think all in all, uh, the reason why we put it on the agenda is so often this council gets accused of, uh, blindsiding people at the last minute on stuff that they're thinking about or, uh, business opportunities that are coming before this council. So what we're we're trying to do is just make it forthcoming and so we can have some discussion, debate on how to proceed with this proposal.
Thank you, Councilman Veer. Any more discussion? Councilman Sharp?
Don't forget, we also have that shooting range out there. And it brings in a lot of people and it's expanding. There'll be more people coming to this town for that, too. So it's beneficial all the way around.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to item letter B in communications petitions, community electronics recycling event. This is Friday, April twenty-sixth. Uh, the D P S building, uh, on Waterworks Avenue, which is one forty-nine, uh, Waterworks Avenue. It's not actually the D P S building that it's next to the D P S building is what it says. So is that the building across the street then, Dave?
It's, it's D P S, Mayor.
Okay, says next to D P S on the flyer, so. Okay. Accepted items, laptops, printers, cable boxes, et cetera, et cetera. You can't take smoke detectors or anything with liquid or freon, so no air conditioners, anything with hazardous ra- waste. Okay, any discussion on that item? All right, moving on to item letter C in communications petitions, traffic control order twenty twenty-four oh nine, blocking of parking spaces. Chief.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was a request from the construction company for the Kiefer House. Uh, this was approved probably close to two years ago. They blocked that off for their, uh, container and supplies in, uh, uh, a trailer, I believe, for their, uh, construction supervisor. So this mayor's request, that was approved in the past, then they went to their downtime, so they're asking for the same thing again.
Okay, any questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will move into communications petitions, item letter D, Hillsdale County Commissioner update, Commissioner Ingles.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I have no update. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer questions, but as far as new news, no new news at this time.
Any questions for Commissioner Ingles?
Oh, come on.
Councilman Veer.
Courthouse is on track to be in the summer, early fall. Um, we had the update from Brian Lockey last in our Board of Commissioners meeting and that was the schedule he gave us. We're on track for that conclusion.
Any more questions for Doug? Getting off easy tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we will move on. Oh, sorry, Councilman Soha.
Um, that's okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just noticed in the traffic control order closure, there is a page for a resolution to be filed with the city clerk. And I'm inquiring, do we need to make a motion to approve that?
Or if it's in, I generally speaking, if it's in communications petitions, we don't vote on it, but Chief can.
If it goes as a permanent control order, this is a temporary.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Councilman Soha. Okay, any more discussion on anything in communications petitions? Seeing none, we will move into old business, item A, set public hearings for confirmation of special assessment roles. Uh, that's for twenty-two oh seven Westwood area, twenty-two twenty-four oh eight, West Saint Joe and Griswold. Kim?
So the, um, Westwood project was moved back a year, so we didn't want to bill out for that assessment until construction had actually started. Both projects are now on track to start construction this summer. So we just need to go ahead and confirm the assessment roles so that we can start sending out bills, um, so the property owners can get those paid off if they choose to do so ahead of time.
Okay, so, so we need to set a public hearing?
Yes.
For April fifteenth?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not gonna be here for that one. No, I will be. Councilman Soha?
So I thought that we had already approved this assessment.
You approved the project, you approved the creation of the district, but we haven't actually certified the rules to be able to send out the actual bills. That has to be done as a separate resolution.
Okay, I, okay. Thank you for the clarification. Then the per parcel share that's shown here will not exceed five thousand dollars, though.
Correct, correct. Five thousand is still our maximum.
Just out of curiosity, we, uh, we approved the project and approved the, the assessment. What would happen if council, um, say this was a different council and we were like, we're not, I'm not voting, because I'm not voting for this. I didn't vote for the for the assessment. So what would happen if all of council voted against it? Would that like throw a weird wrench in the whole ordeal?
It would throw off the funding because we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we would lose that per parcel share that we would be billing out to the taxpayers.
Okay. Tom, did you have something to add to that?
I was just gonna say, under, under ordinance and statute, the way you do special assessment districts is you establish the project, you establish the district, you know, what properties are going to be part of it. But the backend of it is to actually have the role get certified and that has to be done, whether it's a township or a city or wherever else, so that then the assessor can bill it out to those people at those rates.
Okay.
And if you don't do that part of it, you may as well not have done the other parts.
Okay. Any, Bruce, you got a question?
If we don't pass it, then there's gonna be a few people up there in Westwood Drive are gonna come looking for some bodies because it is terrible up there, even on Highland. Oh, it's bad. It's past due to be fixed. So let's buy it, let's get it done because they're there right now setting up the barricades. Everything's on time. Everything's moving. Let's not throw a monkey around China. Thank you.
That was just for my curiosity. More than anything, Bruce, I'm sure this council's not gonna vote for it all and then vote against the, uh, confirmation for assessment roles. Any more questions for Kim? Councilman Veer?
I know from the, uh, tabulations, uh, depending on the district, you had, uh, one partial parcel on in one of the areas in, uh, sixteen thousand oh eighty-seven fifty-five, which would be the fifty percent. And the other one was twelve thousand four eighty-two and eighty-two cents would be the fifty percent, but of course we're capped at the five thousand.
Correct.
So those property owners only gonna get the five thousand. And then I was noticing there was one in there that was twenty-five hundred, but I think it was a corner lot and two.
Yep, those are vacant lots. So we can, the maximum we can bill on those is twenty-five percent of the property value.
Right, okay. Um, and so I would really hope that this council would stay true and, um, approve the, this, uh, the roles going forward because this could really hamper and throw a wrench into any future projects. And would actually put the, the city in a bad spot as far as where they're going into this project, thinking they have a certain portion of the funding. And Kimberly, what was the, uh, the special assessments gonna raise? It's between both parcels was like four hundred and nineteen or something like that? Thousand?
So the the Westwood project, the total is four hundred and five thousand. Saint Joe is a hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Hundred ninety-four thousand, yeah, so. Thank you, Kimberly.
Any more questions for Kim? Comments before we set a public hearing for April fifteenth? Thank you, Kim. Any discussion or do we want to just set the public hearing? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Veer to set a public hearing for April fifteenth for confirmation of special assessment roles. Westwood area, West Saint Joe, Griswold, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we will move into new business, item A. N E Z application, neighborhood enterprise zone application for two seventeen North Manning Street. Let me get caught up in my packet here, too. Yes, thank you. Um, Sam's not here, Dave. Do you wanna?
I'll ask Kim to come up. There was a question, uh, about explaining the N E Z process, so I'm gonna have Kim explain that. As we move forward.
Okay, so the way the N E Zs work, um, prior to construction, they have to apply for the N E Z certificate. Council approves that. Then it goes to the state tax commission. The state tax commission issues a certificate in abeyance while the project is in construction. So they have up to three years to finish the project. Once it is occupied by the owner for new construction, then they have to send a copy of their certificate of occupancy and their principal residence exemption up to the state in order to get the full N E Z instated. Once that is done, in the following year, so it has, it's based on whether and when the property was, um, fully constructed on December thirty-first, the following year, it will be, go on the tax roll on two separate tax bills. So what Mr. Hendy was talking about earlier with, um, Mr. Brodbeck's property, what he is seeing on the G I S is only the ad valorem portion, which is only the land. So he was not seeing the tax bill or the value that's placed on the building that is billed on a separate parcel on a special ex tax rule. It's not part of the ad valorem tax rule. So that's billed at the fifty percent rate based on the statewide average.
Thank you, Kim.
I don't know. If that was cleared up.
And we have, what, three N E Zs now?
We have more than that.
We have four over on Manning. There would be.
We have currently two active on Manning and then this new, new one. The third house that was built up on Manning, they did not apply for an N E Z. The one that's still under construction.
Didn't we N E Z the entirety of the Bacon Street, uh?
The common.
Those are all eligible, except for the first four units because they didn't apply before they started construction.
Okay.
And then there was Three Meadows.
Yeah, Three Meadows has an N E Z district. Yeah. And I think the. And I think the property owner that he's talking, that he was saying we spelled the name wrong, their name is Mach, not March. It's M-A-C-H.
Thank you. Councilman Soha had a question.
Thank you for that explanation. Could council approve a new NEZ? Or how is that, was asked?
For a new district?
Yes.
Yes. Their only limitation is no more than, I guess, 15% of the total land area in the city can be included in NEZ districts.
Councilman Beer.
Kimberly, can you just, because is it a 12-year? Is it 12 years?
It's up to 15.
Up to 15, okay.
We generally approve them for 10.
And then isn't that also, doesn't the taxes start accruing after each year a little bit more?
So the final three years, the taxes will ramp up.
The final three years.
Right.
So they stay flat for the first seven?
Right. And then it'll be billed at, I'm trying to remember what it is, like five, six, and then three-fourths, and then seven-eighths of the, of the.
Actual.
Well, or the city and the county operating millages.
Okay, and then currently, right now, with the current NEZs that the city has, are those set up on 10-year?
All, except for Mr. Broadbeck's, because of the size of his projects, he was granted 15 years.
15 years, okay. Thank you.
Will, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, I just want to make clear that this is not something that is, this is within an existing NEZ, correct?
Right, this is an existing district.
So it's not something new, that some of the folks seem to be thinking that this was a new thing.
No, no, we already had the district created. I think we did it in 2015, I believe.
And is it 50%?
It's 50% of the statewide average tax rate. Which would make it comparable to like a house built in the townships, because that's mainly what we're competing with for people who want to build in this area.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. If the property is sold within, say, the first five years, does that transfer over, or does it go off?
They can request a transfer.
They can request it, okay. Does it require our approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Sharp. So right now, it's a vacant lot, so what are we drawing for taxes off the vacant lot? I got it.
In 2023, they paid about $350.
Wow. And with this house on there, what would it be? Let's throw that figure out there. With the NEZ.
With the NEZ, it will be about 8,800.
Thank you.
Plus that 350 will still be taxed at the normal rate.
Any more questions? Councilman Palladino?
Is this a 10-year or 12-year?
He's requesting 12, because it is, he's not spending quite as much as what Broadbeck did, but it's more than a typical house.
Okay, I was just wondering if I was missing some other part. I thought we were discussing this 10. Is the 8,800 revenue to the city?
Yes. Well, that's taxes that would be split with the county and the schools.
Okay. What percentage decrease does the county take in terms of taxes?
So the percentage of decrease would be the same as what the city's taking, because it's, the taxes are still spread at the same rate between the entities that they would be at a normal tax roll. So it affects all of us the same.
I see.
Any more questions for Kim? It is, it does create a little bit of a moral conundrum, because the NEZs really do feel like special treatment, but then once you give them to one person, that applies for them. If you don't give them to the other people that apply for them, then you've got one person that got special treatment, another, it's really hard to estimate some sort of equity in this process. But it's also really hard to reconcile the taxes that we've raised on residents for things like special assessments and then to have deals like this for new construction. It's, it's unfortunate. Councilman Sharp?
5860 Northwest Street, they're in the NEZ. They still sit vacant, empty, but there's a possibility of hope that they'll be fixed and be done, and they're also under the NEZ. So fortunately, we'll see what happens there, but right now, they're just two vacant houses sitting there.
Thanks, Bruce. Councilman Palladino?
So what is the total amount to the city per year?
About 3,800.
Okay, so what sort of equivalent would that be for a city or a home that has the principal homeowner's exemption at the ad valorem tax rate?
So a $250,000 house.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Will this be, will this follow the standard procedure for increases in the taxable value, 5% a year, or the increase in the true value?
Correct.
Oh, during the 12 years?
Yeah.
And then it'll be reassessed at that rate, so the calculations won't change during that period? Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Kim. Any conversation at the council table? Councilman Beer?
Well, we had some people that in public comment kind of addressed this, and I think this council is trying to answer some of those questions, but they left. So it makes it kind of difficult to communicate when you need two willing partners, one to say something, one to listen. And I think this council, seriously, because of the questions that they caused through our legal and everything, that we were listening to what they had to say, and this council tried to address some of their concerns.
Thank you, Councilman Beer. Councilman Wolfram?
Yeah, the purpose of the NEZ is to attract, to attract new building. And if you look around, this proposed building that Mr. Rorick has is going to be a million dollars. Okay, I would challenge you to look around and see how many other million-dollar buildings there are in Hillsdale that are not within an NEZ. I mean, they just wouldn't be here. And so that was the whole purpose of the NEZ Act, was to allow cities to attract, attract buildings that, and over, and you know, a house might last 40 years. So over a 10- or 12-year period, you're getting reduced from what it would have been if it had landed there, but it wouldn't have landed there. So that was the whole idea of why the NEZ was, the Act itself was created in the first place, was to allow cities to attract building, you know, housing that wouldn't otherwise be there.
I understand, Councilman Wolfram. Councilman Beer?
One other comment on that, Mr. Wolfram, is the fact that the NEZ is just a temporary thing. It's only going to be, in this, most cases 10, we have one that was 15. This one might be 12, but at which point, at the end of that, the city is going to recoup and actually get a fair market taxable value for those properties.
Any more discussion? Councilman Palladino?
As soon as this is impossible, but is there any way, under law, or any consideration of a way to simply assess new builds according to a different, though uniform standard? Okay, that seems to be the obvious thing here, because this tax bill does look fairly prohibitive on its face, but subjecting these to the political process every time is subject to corruption, to improvidence, indiscretion. Yeah, I don't know if there's anything to add, but this sort of ad hoc selection is clearly not a, the best mechanism.
I would agree. Councilman Soha?
I can appreciate that sentiment, but as Councilman Wolfram said, you know, this is spurring economic development in our city, and the homes that are being built up there in the college corridor are magnificent, the three that are already there, and this, I think, will be no exception to that. And 40 years, you know, my home's at least 130 years old, so I would hope that a million-dollar home built in 2024 would last more than 40 years, and so that we have at least, you know, 28 years of full taxes to be collected. So I think it's a win-win, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. I mean, you know, everything you said is true. I'm just looking at it from the perspective of the dozens of residents that I have talked to in the past year who got their tax bills and said, my taxes doubled this year, or my taxes, and I know you're getting those calls, too. I know you are. I mean, I know you have those correspondences, too. I know that, bud, I know that, and I'm always, I always emphasize to people that this board, our resident, we're made up of residents of the city, that we're not, that we don't pass laws or ordinances or policy that we're not all subject to as well. So we're all, we all suffer under the same, under the same system as everybody else. We don't, we're not Congress. We don't get exemptions from the laws that we passed or special treatment. I'm not. It's just, I'm talking about optics, and I know that the keen business minds on council don't think about optics a lot, because they're impractical, but optics are part of the political process. They are. They're supposed to be. So. Councilman Beer?
Mayor, with all due respect, you have constituents that say in there, tax bills doubled. And I'm just going to throw this at Kimberly, is, I don't think, they went up 5%.
The only way that they would have gone up by more than 5% is if they had new construction or it was a new purchase in the prior year.
Or possibly because they have an SAD and their tax.
And that's not an actual tax, that's a special.
Assessment, right, and that could be, but still, I would find that. So figuring, just, I'm just a numbers guy. So how, what would the value of the home be if you had a tax bill of $500?
You're asking me to do backwards math.
I'm just, I'm kind of curious. I'm thinking the taxable value on it would probably be... Yeah, 20 or 30 thousand, right.
Yeah, for $500.
And so if they happened to be in the special assessment district, and they were getting tagged with the other 500, well, in that case, I suppose you could say it doubled, but for all.
And realistically, there are houses on St. Joe that are going to see that.
Okay. And then it's, now that would be pushing also the, because you can't have a taxable value greater than 25%?
Right.
Okay. So, I guess, you know, it's, I think when people are trying to make points, they have a tendency to exaggerate, because all I know is that if you give me 100 bucks, it's not that much, but if I have to give you 100, it's a heck of a lot more.
Councilman Sharp?
We've got to remember, we also did a special assessment to fix these roads, because I've been on council since 2007. We tried everything we could think of to get these roads fixed. We finally came up with this. The roads are getting fixed. It's either that, or you're just going to keep repairing your cars, because these roads are terrible. I challenge you to go up Westwood Drive right now, and you'll know why we passed this. It's that bad. We, as council, also promote the growth of the city of Hillsdale. One way or the other, whether it be an NEZ or what, it grows Hillsdale. It isn't just for the college, it's for the community of the whole, all of Hillsdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Any more conversation, discussion?
Move to approve the NEZ?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharp to approve the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone application for 217 North Manning Street. All in favor? Any opposed? Roll call vote, City Clerk.
Councilman Palladino? Councilwoman Pratt? Councilman Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockberg?
No.
And Councilman Morrissey?
Yes.
Passes?
Six to three.
Six to three.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, council. Let's move on. New business, item letter B, police vehicle and equipment purchase. Chief?
Meanwhile, preparing our budget, I put in for a capital expenditure for equipment and one vehicle from the general fund, was requested to use the millage fund for public safety equipment vehicles and building maintenance. That fund currently holds a little over $178,000. So I started investigating police vehicles. It was last year at this time in March, where you guys approved the purchase of the millage fund for our next police vehicle. It was a Chevy Tahoe. I contacted Berger Chevrolet, who we bought that off their lot, who told me that it is not going to happen anymore, that once they placed all their orders for departments that put in for Tahos, manufacturer contacted them and told them how many they were going to get was not enough to fulfill their orders, therefore, there would be no extras to buy off the lots this year. Plus, said General Motors was going to re-engineer the Tahoe mid-year this year, so they were, couldn't even guesstimate what pricing would be in the fall. He did at that time say they did have police package pickup truck on their lot that they were selling. At that time, I think then for his time, started checking, calling lots where we had purchased Ford Explorers off the lots before, that they had the same way, they fulfilled their orders, but they would always order extra, which we've had to buy, we had a vehicle totaled one year several years ago, mid-year, and we had to find one and bought it off the lot. None of those dealerships have anything off the lot either, nor can they tell me what the pricing might be in the fall. And as a matter of fact, the pricing I got from Ford for the Explorer comes with zero numbers on it. It doesn't come with a base price, it doesn't come with any option prices. I've never seen that before, so would have no idea what the cost would even be. I was told by Mid-Michigan Emergency Equipment, who was a primary outfitter for a lot of departments in the capital area, who works with the manufacturers, who said what they've heard is this fall, that might, even the Fords might be limited. So therefore, I contacted Berger Chevrolet back. The Silverado pickup truck that you have the paperwork on for the bid is the only vehicle I can get off the lot. Right now, that is a police package vehicle. That quote amount was $51,522, including delivery and title fee. I think the option sheets was in there also. I did not foresee coming down to, A, coming here to ask for vehicle and not knowing what it was going to cost, or B, only having one thing to select and waiting till fall. We have no idea what the pricing is going to be, and you heard me speak last March, this being the millage month, millage fund expenditures, and how we had set that up as going through the Public Safety Committee and then coming to council, and that we would always act as good stewards of the public's extra money that they gave us for these type of purchases. We were told realistically, if we wanted to wait to order a 25 Tahoe, if we were even able to get one, we might have to run the total cost up to about $75,000 to purchase it and have it outfitted. So right now, I didn't have all the outfitting charges, but I have that on here now, and it should be in your packet. The price of the vehicle, $51,522. The outfitting, $11,082. The antenna we need to put on, a 401, a new radar unit, $1,925, and graphics, $472, for a total of $65,402.56, where the public saved. thousand, four hundred and two dollars and fifty-six cents, where the Public Safety Committee supported this, we had a meeting last week. At that time, they also approved the outfitting up to sixteen thousand dollars. This is about thirteen thousand, nine hundred for the total outfitting, so we came in under that just because we didn't have, uh, the total pricing. So I am requesting support in purchasing this police package, twenty-twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado pickup truck for our next fleet vehicle, as we don't know what cost will be in the fall, and we don't know if we can even acquire one then. This is just trying to get one now, because we could have a big gap in the future.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Chief. I would also like to bring to council's attention, Chief mentioned at the Public Safety Meeting, these, uh, Silverado pickup trucks have a higher resale value at the end of their useful service for the city, so for example, and correct me on the numbers if necessary, but the Explorers, we might be able to get, uh, five thousand dollars for a used one if we were to sell it, I know we repurposed them within the city, but these pickup trucks could take as, command as much as fifteen thousand dollars if we were to sell it on the market, so there's an additional benefit to this, and plus, it's on the lot. Plus, the cost, the Tahoe was ten thousand dollars less, is that correct?
No, right now, if you could get one, the Tahoe would be a thousand dollars more than the pickup truck.
No, I meant the one we just bought last year was.
Yes.
It was significantly less expensive.
It's a ten to eleven thousand increase in one year, just on the Tahoe.
Right, and so that, my point being, the chance of the cost not incrementally increasing in the near future is slim. I also would like to mention, Chief, I did see that Stellantis is making a interceptor per, uh, the Wagoneer, so, which is a Jeep model, that there's, I've seen some advertising on that, my phone must have been listening to me, but, um, just thought I'd bring it to your attention.
It did come through the city manager's listserv last week or the week before, um, city manager's talking about acquisitions of police vehicles, and there was one, that stated just why you did, uh, that their department actually wanted the pickup trucks because of the resale at the end of five years, one hundred thousand miles, tripled over what they could give for the Ford S U V. Um, another department, uh, reported through that listserv that they ordered seven Ford Explorers in twenty-twenty-two, it just got notified by the manufacturer that they're going into production now. So, in the fall, we may not have a price to bring to you and would have no idea if it actually would, the order would be fulfilled.
Thank you, Chief. Any more questions for the Chief? Councilman Palladino?
Could you remind us of what you, um, paid for police vehicles maybe past, uh, three or four years?
In two thousand and nineteen, we had to move our budget from thirty-five thousand to forty-five thousand, so for the two thousand and nineteen model that we bought, we were able to purchase an outfit for thirty-five thousand. Starting in twenty-twenty, we had to move that to forty-five thousand. Um, and it's gone up by a couple, we've gone over by one to two thousand for a couple of years after that. Um, last year, we moved to fifty-three, I think we budgeted fifty-five and we came in at fifty-three something, and this year, we're up to sixty-five. It seems like, uh, I know the price of vehicles off the lot went up during that same time period for the public market, um, some of them, an unreasonable amount of money, um, but I don't know whether the government pricing has been reduced or eliminated with some of this, but, uh, when, when I get a pack and I have it right here that comes from Ford with purchasing from the state purchasing contract, it has zero numbers on it, I have no idea what that vehicle would cost. And I think it's because it could, they might not be able to fulfill it, so you might not get your order for two years, and they're not gonna lock you in at a price, they're gonna give you the price of when they build it.
Any more questions? Entertain a motion for the purchase?
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Stuccio, seconded by Councilman Soha. Can I have a roll call? City Clerk.
Councilwoman Pratt? Councilman Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilman Morrissey?
Yes.
And Palladino?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
The second item I brought to the Public Safety Committee to, for an expenditure of the millage fund was to replace our conducted electrical units, which are our tasers that we carry. They'll be five years old in May, and Axon will not extend their product liability certificate to any C E Us wielded that are over five years old. Because there's so many electronic circuits in there, they just, they won't do it, I know, um, Councilmember Palladino asked me what that, I think it was you asked me what that risk might be, I couldn't tell you, I can't tell you what they think the risk might be to the unit if we use it, if it's more than five years old, it could be nothing, but they're not willing to take the chance. Um, I don't know, as we should, we reached out to the company, and we do have an instructor in-house on this, to replace with the model that we have right now, which is what I presented to the Public Safety Committee, which would be purchasing six of them, that they refer to as the handles, plus four-year warranty for each of them, a battery for each of them, and, uh, I don't know as we would need the cartridges, but if we included the cartridges, the total was sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-six cents. I think we can come in under because, um, they have two models after what we carry, but I think the next model is what some departments are going to, and I don't know as the model after that's actually out, where you can get it now, and I don't know how long it would take to get that, but, uh, quote they gave us on the Taser seven, which would be one of their newer models, um, is up closer to twenty thousand dollars. I say that because we would have to replace all of our holsters, and those are ninety-plus dollars each, um, besides all the equipment they have, and I think getting another five years out of the model we have now, maybe that price for the seven is gonna come down a little bit in the future, so we're trying to.
Yes, sir, and I'll be right back.
Be good managers of our money. I, the, moving to the next model up, it's actually a double cartridge, where I think you could select between close range and long range, so they have a lot more capabilities, which would probably be a good factor if maybe you worked in the county where your backup might be a long ways away or something like that, but I, I feel very comfortable just asking to replace, uh, the same model that we're carrying right now for the next five years, not to exceed the sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Councilman Beer?
Uh, Chief, uh, notice on the, uh, on this, uh, that, that one that you're suggesting, uh, the, it has just a four-year warranty and the new ones have a five-year warranty, is, or is that?
The fifth year is, we head into our agenda life, so they're probably not getting warranty that, that's the way the paperwork came in, I saw that too.
Okay.
Any more questions for the Chief regarding the replacement of the tasers? Yeah, I don't know, do we need a second motion to approve the tasers? Okay. Motion on the floor, uh, from Councilman Wolfram, seconded by Councilman Beer to approve the replacement of the six taser units. All, uh, can I have a roll call though, please? Deputy Clerk.
Councilman Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilman Mor- Morrissey?
Yes.
Palladino?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Pratt?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, we'll move into our last new business item, letter C, set public hearing for amending parking violation fines. Um, March twelfth, City Hillsdale Public Services Committee meant to discuss parking fines and noted the city has not adjusted parking fines in many years. Um, after considerable discussion, public service is recommending to amend and raise all parking fines from ten to twenty and handicap parking violations from fifty to seventy-five, and have the amendment to be sent to council to set a public hearing to allow the public an opportunity to be heard. We'll set this for April fifteenth, along with our other public hearing. Any discussion on this? Yes, sir.
Just like council to know that, um, public services and public safety have noticed that a lot of these fines and fees have been neglected for decades, and we're just trying to keep up with them, and we thought this was a, a nice way to just start to, uh, actually recoup some of the costs associated with, uh, maintaining our parking and riding tickets.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Any more discussion? I entertain a motion to set a public hearing for April fifteenth. Motion on the floor from Councilman Stuccio, seconded by Councilman Beer, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move into miscellaneous reports, got no proclamations, got one appointment, that's to zoning board of appeals, and that's Jordan Adams. Jordan sent me an application, boy, September twenty-first of twenty-twenty-one, uh, and somehow it fell through the clack, cracks, and he reached out to me probably two weeks ago, and was like, hey, I see you making lots of appointments, and I was wondering about my application, and, uh, yeah, just something that got lost in the clerk's office and also that fell off my radar, so, um, yeah, seems like he'd be a good candidate, lives in the city. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've worked with, uh, Jordan Adams on a project a couple of years ago, very capable young guy, he'd be a good addition to the city government.
Sure. Yep. Any questions about him? People apply, try to make room for him somewhere, so I'm sorry, Jordan, I would have definitely got him on something long ago, but. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment?
Some support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Jordan, for your willingness to serve. Okay, we will move into general public comment. During this time, podium will be open, please limit your comments to three minutes, please limit your trips to one to the podium, and you may speak on whatever your heart so desires. Podium is now open.
Richard Smith, sixty-three South Broad Street, I'm here as a volunteer for the Mitchell Research Center. I heard someone make the comment, they didn't wanna be left in the dark, so I decided to come and talk to all of you at the same, at once. I've been, I was with the Development Committee back in August when we were working on something for the Mitchell Center. And I got involved in it as a volunteer, then I found out the condition of the Mitchell Building and really got involved in it. On eighteen ninety-five, when this was willed to the city of Hillsdale and the Hillsdale Public, uh, grade schools, uh, in nineteen seventy-six, the Public Department of Public Education gave their portion of it to the city of Hillsdale. And it remained that way until nineteen ninety-nine, when, or two thousand, when they decided, the Library Board decided to have a funding project and had over two million dollars in the bank to build a, an addition to the Mitchell Building. Plan was put in place, uh, and it was approved to attach the old, um, General Chevrolet dealership to the Mitchell Building to make it one big, large library in conjunction with the design of the Mitchell Building itself. When that, that got started in early two thousand, and they got to working on it, got, got all the approvals and everything, and started building it, well, then it was discovered that the money that they had, they thought was seven hundred thousand dollars short. Somehow, the trust fund that was in the bank took a dump. Well, they went ahead and funded through various means, and I'm not sure of all of it, but they funded it and they finished what we now have as the Hillsdale Public Library. And as I said, when I found out the problems with the building, I started investigating, and there had been a report done back in, uh, twenty-twenty-two, uh, that was terrible, to say the least, on the Mitchell Building. It would require a lot of work. Prior to that, twenty-ten, um, the, uh, the Department of Build, um, Development Committee, Hillsdale Community Development Committee, got a report from the, then the Department of Public Works Service Manager, that he said he would not light the boiler in the Mitchell, Mitchell Building again, period. So that Development Committee at that time, in twenty-ten, voted to dump the Mitchell Building on August first of twenty-ten. Well, it wasn't dumped, uh, the city manager at that time came up with a hundred thousand dollars from TIFA money to repair the Mitchell Building. Out of that hundred thousand, about sixty thousand was spent for new heating and air conditioning, done away with the boiler system. Boiler still sits there, but it doesn't work, uh, because they never removed it, as they should have. A new roof was put on and the building was painted. Now, what happened to the other forty thousand, I have no idea. In a way, I started wondering, I had found out that in twenty-twenty-two, the city Public Library was given a, uh, donation of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Ed Kenish over in Litchfield for the Hillsdale Public Library System. My question is, when did the Mitchell Building not, no longer become part of the library system? Is that when they took the phones, disconnected the phones, or what? I mean, in the city council, somewhere along the line must have made a decision to separate the two facilities from the library system, I, and I don't see, in my history, that I was looking at, and blame me, I spent a few hours looking, I couldn't find where the city had ever done, made that determination, except I know they disconnected the telephone and the computer stuff, uh, because the Library Board didn't wanna pay for the Mitchell Building, apparently, but was that a city council requirement, or was that a, some library board? Who, I'm not sure who the library board even is. And I know there's a tax, the library tax, that has been in, for years, of almost a mill per property owner for the city, and I don't know about the townships, there was also money from the townships, so all this should have been in a budget for the public library system, which the Mitchell Building was part of. So, I just wanted to be everybody, we're currently paying five hundred dollars a month to pay the electric and gas bill, which it does pay. That runs out, that was extended until the end of, your, year-end is July thirtieth, is that correct? Or June thirtieth? June thirtieth, okay, so that's in effect, that five hundred dollar payment that we're, that the Mitchell Research Center, um, is giving to the city to pay, uh, for that portion of it, but what are we doing between now and June thirtieth? That's my question. And the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant that you put in for was denied. Of that two hundred and seventy-five thousand, there was forty-five thousand just to repair the basement. That basement probably wouldn't, shouldn't even, they wouldn't put a new building on that basement, I'll tell you that much, because it's, that's an old building, but the basement is the, is the foundation of the whole property, and if that's not repaired soon, you're not even gonna have to worry about the Mitchell Building.
Okay. Thanks, Dick, for past time, but maybe you should go to, come to a public services meeting or, uh, community development, is that where the library's under?
Okay. And we have, the next Community Development Meeting is set for April twenty-fourth at five thirty.
Yeah, I'd come to it, Dick, because you've got some good points and good questions. I think that need to be explored.
I will as soon as my birthday party is over.
Is that your birthday?
Yeah.
Sorry, bud.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Richard.
What time is that again?
Uh, I think it's five thirty. I'll check. April twenty-fourth at, uh, uh, five thirty.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Mayor, City Council, three different matters. First was the FOIA. You were, you were past the deadline on the FOIA that I submitted, sir. Not only that, but I got charged for it again. And on the invoice, the FOIA was in February, I picked it up in March, the invoice is dated January. So something is going on with the billing for the FOIA's. Number two, I want to commend Kim Thomas for cleaning up the aftermath for all the code violations, especially the explosive one at thirty-nine Berry Street. Propane tanks sitting around in the yard and stuff. I'm sure people have passed by them, but nobody worries. And that's right across the road from the school. The third thing. In December, I talked in front of council about a running at-large situation with no police response except by a phone call. Well, that was in the eighteenth of December. The nineteenth, two city police officers showed up at my house, we talked, looked at the pictures and they left. By their demeanor, I said, hmm, what's going to go on about this? So I put in a FOIA for the results. And I got back a case report full of erroneous information. So I submitted a civilian form to the Police Department to investigate it. Then nothing back, so I submitted another FOIA. I got back, back again, a bunch of paperwork from the city manager with no response, except for they were nice enough to give me a copy of a rewrite of the original, still with false information in it and added comments. So I want to press charges about false information. If I did it to the police, gave false information, I would get jacked up. But it seems like nothing has happened out of it. And if you want it prosecuted, attorney? Still, you know, what, what? Hello? Well, she's right, see themselves. But I want to submit this for action. There's copies of it where they won. They said I made a phone call to them on two different dates between the two of them. And I did not do that. And that, I made a comment that I thought the dogs wrong to that address, but I didn't do that because we knew it because they've been there all summer. And this, on the fourth call to this address in February, it was wrote up that they would get a ticket. Fifth time, I don't know what happened, but it doesn't seem like it. So there's some funny business going on with your Police Department. And I want to press charges whichever way, however made it, I made, because I would get charged if I did the such. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the podium and move into the city manager's report. Dave?
Mayor, just a couple of things to mention. The Westwood Project actually started today, so they're down there getting that project going. I will talk to the city engineer about getting a refresher out to the residents and regards to communication. I believe we have most of their email addresses and such, so we'll, that is moving forward. Also, next week, just so everyone is aware, they will be replacing valves near a number of the schools, because next week is spring break for our schools in the area. So we'll be replacing valves and shutting the water down at the schools downtown, on Bacon Street, south of Bacon. Hopefully the valve works and it won't affect the north side of Howell, but the south side of Howell will be shut down and the south, the south side of Norwood. So there's a number of areas next week. We've been coordinating with the local businesses to try to give as least disruption as possible. But if you hear something or a question comes up, please refer them our direction and we'll get them in touch with the city engineer. As was mentioned by a couple council members, the Kiefer Project is not dead. It is still moving forward. Construction is still ongoing. And based on the economic reports, or reports done, kind of a room study for hotels, it demonstrates that there's plenty of room within the rental market for both projects. So CL is continuing to move forward. Next, the next council meeting on April first, we will be presenting the city's budget for council review. And then just remember on the eighth, and then the, so we'll get the, you'll get the budget on the first. On the eighth, we're going to have our first budget meeting. Then we'll have our second meeting on the fifteenth and then I believe it's the twenty-second or something like that, that we'll have our second budget meeting. A lot of good information will be presented at that time. This budget was very tight, just because the nuances, property taxes did go up to five percent, which is the, the lower of what they were actually. But given a number of constraints, whether it was property casualty insurance increase, health insurance, pension increase, our pension plan lost three million dollars last year, so that force increased our payments into the plan for the upcoming year. So there are a number of things that we'll be talking about in those budget meetings that will be of interest to, to the council and public. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any search questions?
Thank you, Dave. I do have a question. How long is the water expected to be off on Howell Street?
On Howell Street, there, there might be two occasions that it's off. They've been coordinating with the businesses, particularly Checker Records.
That's what I'm concerned about, because I know they use a lot of water making coffee, so.
Correct. Correct. And they, Kristen's been in contact with them, but she anticipates two short times, but they kind of overlap. But they're going to, they're trying to get them done as quickly as possible.
Okay.
It won't go over an extended time. What extends it is, once we put the valves in, we have to do boil water
Sure.
until they pass a consecutive test. And we've had good luck with those, but you still have to go through that process and because of food, there's a health department.
Sure.
So.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Okay, let's move on. Council comment? Anybody have anything good? Councilman Soha?
I don't know if it's good, but part of the Public Safety Committee meeting, Chief mentioned that because of the defund the police movement and all the negativity and some of the unions pressing back against manufacturers such as Ford, that, that has caused them to reduce their productivity for these municipal vehicles that are police pursuit vehicles. And I just wanted to publicly rebuke those companies if that's true and say, you know, public safety is a paramount importance and communities like ours that don't have the, the capital or the muscle to be able to make massive purchases are, are being hurt because of it. And that frustrates me.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. That's unfortunate information. Any more council comment? Councilman Sharp?
Uh, just everybody be patient. You're getting a lot of boil water alerts. It's going to happen because you're seeing, if you just drive around town, take out, up by the college everywhere where they've been digging. And it's everywhere. And on ninety-nine, I see they're digging again out there. We, we lost the camera the one time. We got another hole out there. But just be patient. We'll get through this summer. It's going to be a lot of boil water alerts. It's going to be in my neighborhood too. I'm going to have to go through it too, I know. Go ahead, Dave.
Dave, I'm glad you, you brought that up. The item on the agenda, the eight-inch water main bore, that's the hole that you're seeing on ninety-nine. And so we have two water mains that go up to the industrial park in that area. And because when the camera was lost, there's only one of them that's functional right now. So this bore is to get a second one in there before, you know, we have an issue with the one that's currently functioning. So this is to make sure that we, we are able to get water to our industrial park, the med center up there and, and all of those places. So this is of critical importance still.
Well, it is orange marrow season anyway, so.
Yeah.
Plenty of happens.
Anything else, Councilman Palladino?
I heard reports about more huskies in Ward Three. I was wondering if Chief had any updates on that. Someone contacted me and said they killed two of his chickens, so I know we've talked about this at Public Safety, but it just seems, I don't know, council might need to consider something. We can't have huskies running at large on a, a weekly or monthly basis. No, no update on what happened there, though? No. The other thing is, in relation to Richard's comment, I did do quite a bit of research on this. It was over a year ago at this point, but, so the city provision that establishes the library fund, section two dash two sixty-five, does still say that it established the Mitchell Public Library. And so I was always wondering, how was it that the money was transferred? Now, this is over twenty years, so probably outside of most of our memory. How was it that the money was transferred to this new library? Yeah, it says, "The city council may appropriate such sums of money as it deems reasonable and necessary for the support and maintenance of the Mitchell Public Library and other such public libraries that shall be hereafter established in the city." So if you try to find where the city council established other public libraries, I wasn't, wasn't able to find that. Might be interesting research to do, but, you know, we, we don't want an argument to come up later that this money was actually all improperly diverted from the Mitchell Public Library.
No? We don't want that?
None of our fault if it was.
I, I talked to Congressman Wahlberg's district director last week and he told me that Wahlberg got four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our Arch Avenue reconstruction and storm sewer, storm system improvements in the last funding bill. So have you got any updates on that, Dave, or?
Um, just that it is in the bill. We have looked at the bill and it is, it is earmarked in that bill, so
Awesome.
they've told us that we should, we should be hearing from the, the federal government here soon.
Great. Great. Good deal. Any other council comment? Y'all want to go home? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.